Yeah, all right, let's, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order. 12:08 on January the 6th. We'll start with the flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me put my sticker on my door here real quick. All right, well, let me put our agenda up on the board here. Hopefully, I can find something. There we go. And just as a reminder, we are recording and so, but today, I'll start with our thought of the day. I actually borrowed this from the district email that came out. Always remember that you are unique, just like everybody else. And that has a lot of qualities. We'll continue with some happy thoughts and then hopefully some reports on some items. I get to be your program today. And a reminder, we have a board meeting next Tuesday. So I'm gonna take this down right now, just because I'd rather see your faces than the agenda. So we're open for happy thought sharing if you'd like.
I have one.
All right.
I got round one of Moderna.
Yes.
There you go.
I have a face still, I'm good, so.
Good. Was it the half dose or a full?
It's, yeah, it's split. So 28 days, oh, I got it on December 30th. So 28 days from then, I go back. I got it at the hospital and the lady that was giving me mine said everything had gone really smooth and they'd done like 150 or something at that time and everything is going okay, so.
Good. I guess what I was referring to is most recently, they've talked about Moderna doing half of a half, if you will. Rather than two doses, yeah. You got the full dosage, which is good. And so, yeah, and we're, I know educators are up the list. I think we're in the 1B group. And so, hoping that in our county, we can get to our, my staff, all the teaching staffs sooner than later. I was at a superintendent's meeting yesterday and hearing some of the horror stories around the state. Just as a brief example, Lynn County is getting 100 doses a week. Union County, and Lynn County is, you know, Salem, no, not Salem. Well, you know where Lynn County is, yeah. Albany and all of that. Union County is getting 100 a week. And then there was some other community of 200 that received 400 doses. Yeah, and so, just some weird things going on. So again, I'm hoping that in the more rural counties that we can get through it quicker, even though I know our public health department staff is quite limited in their human capacity. So I think they're doing the best they can. Morgan, was it primarily the healthcare people that you were seeing of that 100 or 150 first round?
I think so, yeah. I just asked the lady that was doing my injection how it was going. And I would, I would guess, though, I mean, people that I know that have gotten it, I've been like the hospital workers. Yeah, so.
I've also seen the dental hygienist, I'm also kind of, yeah. Well, congratulations, you're cardholder.
The 10-page document that was put out by OHA in December is pretty thorough. And cutting through the political junk on Facebook, it seems like what's happening is that people in the healthcare field are getting appointments and are getting the vaccine. The governor's said that she hoped to do 12,000 a day for the next two weeks, which would get us up to around 250,000 total for the state, which is a drop in the bucket. But again, if you ignore the people trying to score points or to cause issues, it looks like it's doing as well as can be expected. And that the priorities that have been set by the state of Oregon are being complied with here in Curry County because the hospital seems to be the ones controlling the distribution of vaccine into arms and not the county.
Yeah. Mary, you had a comment or?
Oh, you know, I was gonna say, does Morgan realize now she's being tracked? Just kidding.
Nanotechnology, gotta love it.
Whatever they got, they're uploading into whoever's.
Not that our cell phones don't do that regularly.
Like, if they want my data, I guess they got it, but.
Yeah.
It's a trade-off, I guess, I don't know.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether your DNA gets altered after the first shot or it takes the second shot to do that. But you know, if all of a sudden you find yourself changing in strange ways, you know why.
I'll let you know.
All right, thanks for sharing. Somebody else?
Well, I've got a few things. Some more like profound than others. The not-so-profound one is that my sister finally moved into her house in Canyonville, which meant that I got my garage cleaned out. So that's pretty awesome. The great thing for me during the holidays, the two things, I have continued my commitment to read books. And I'll give you my book report, which is that I read a book called The Wax Pack, which is about a guy who collected baseball cards when he was a kid. And he bought an unopened pack of 1986 baseball cards about, I don't know, probably about five years ago, and decided that he was going to track down every player that was in that pack and interview them about what they're doing in their life now. And it was a really, really interesting read, even if you're not into sports or baseball. I think just kind of the conclusion was, well, it's a lot about probably men and their fathers and their relationships with their fathers, because I think that like, one of the main things that the author came away with was that all of these baseball players, like a lot of what they did during their careers was to prove something or to, because of their, because of something they didn't have or because of something they did have with their father. So that was interesting. And I also read a book about Pappy Van Winkle bourbon. So, which is a really interesting story. If you, I don't know if you've ever heard of Pappy Van Winkle, but it's like this, this bourbon that sells for like $1,000 an ounce, made in Kentucky. But also, on Christmas, the day after Christmas, I texted a really close friend of mine in Portland and found out that he was staying in an RV park in Coos Bay. So I actually, the day after Christmas, was able to, just without any kind of plan whatsoever, see somebody that I was really happy to see, so.
Well, yeah, very good. Welcome, David. How about anybody else? We're doing happy thoughts, David. Good morning, afternoon now. All right. Well, we're still awaiting the birth of the Cinnabon. We're 10 days out, or five, five days out from the due date, so we'll keep you posted on that. And yeah, good, good holiday. It was interesting, my younger daughter and her husband, who live in Seattle, actually met us. They, they, they used our travel trailer as their Airbnb. We parked it at Humbug, and so they used it for about three or four nights. And so, but again, being very socially aware, we kept our distance and probably visited for 15 minutes. So it was odd to have a loved one so close, but yet spend so little time with them. So, but it was their vacation and, and we were happy to have that time with them, so. Yeah. All right. Okay, Jeremy, is that Wax Pack, is that in the collection at the library or is that your, it is, okay.
It is, yep.
The book I read during the break was by James Patterson. I know for a lot of people, they're not their favorite, but it was The Final Days of John Lennon. And so, it basically is a side-by-side chronology of The Beatles and John Lennon's life and intermixed with Mark Chapman's psyche and his assassination plan as it came up to that night. An interesting side on that as well, on the night of the assassination murder, I was working as a clerk at a liquor store and right close to the university in San Francisco. And all of a sudden, it was about 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock that night. And all of a sudden, all these people start rushing in looking for copies of Playboy magazine, which was on the front counter, and because that was the month that he was the interview and people were buying them and then I think selling them for more outside the door, as far as collector's items. That weird, kind of weird thought. Okay, let's, let's move on to some other thoughts or updates. Let's see, I want to make sure. I was hoping Becky was gonna be on to talk about our holiday bottle auction results. The last I had heard is we had about $1,800. We did receive notice that we are going to, we would, our literacy grant for $500 was approved. We, this Saturday is the district grant meeting that all members can attend. And I have the Zoom link I'll attach for people that would want to be a part of that process. Denise, maybe you could give us a little update on our membership cleanup? And then I know Dave's on the line as far as the president-elect and the upcoming pets. So that's gonna be our next topic. So maybe Denise, if you could give us an update on, on membership, as you recall?
Sure, two things. One, I did talk to Becky, oh, I don't know, you know, day after Christmas, two days after Christmas. And she can't make these meetings because she goes home to feed James every day at lunch.
Right.
So she's just busy. And I think she said it was 1850 or 1875 that we made on the bottle auction. John Hawkins told her that as soon as he got back from Bend, he would give her a check for the membership. She heard nothing from Jim Gardner and she heard nothing from Ron Dunlap and neither did anybody else, that I understand. So on the evening of the 28th, I wiped him out.
Yep, yeah. Those are the ones I saw as well, so. And certainly, they're, they're always welcome to come back, but maybe when COVID does have its impact or so on. But good, thank you for that. So over the holiday, again, received some emails from the district regarding pets and that urgency to have a president-elect selected. As David has shared with us before, we're not alone. There are several chapters, it looks like, across our region that are in that process of trying to select someone. Port Orford was able to have someone step up, but we in Brookings do not. I guess at this point, even though I'm pretty confident we will be relocating sometime this summer, if it helps the process, I will submit to the district for me to continue as president. But just know that when I move, that someone's gonna have to take my place. So in that sense, I will take advantage of the trainings that come up here in a couple of weeks. The price went up from 100 to 200, but on the other hand, there's no travel involved. That was the big part of getting to Seattle and all of the lodging and so on. So if, because that's somewhat of an urgent decision that needs to be made, I'm open for discussion on that proposal, unless there was someone else who has had a change of heart over the past couple of months and is about becoming president-elect and moving forward. Yes, Mary?
I don't have a change of heart about myself doing it, but has anybody ever talked to Mitch Colges? He was president years ago and did a really good job, and now that he's living here again? Maybe?
Yeah, yeah.
He hasn't spoken to anybody or showed up since that meeting in the park that day.
I know, but he never did do the Zoom meetings anyway, so that doesn't surprise me.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Yeah, I don't mind reaching out to him and seeing if he'd be interested.
We, was there, I felt like at some point during the spring or summer, there was a, was Jerry Herbage sort of in line?
I believe he committed more to '21, '22 rather than.
So I guess that was my question. So there is technically somebody in line for that year following.
Right, right. Yeah.
I mean, if you were willing to go through like May, or sorry.
There already is till July.
So.
It's really, yeah.
When you think you, how, when you think you would not be able to do it, are you guys moving?
We're not sure. We're not sure. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the only reason I'm throwing it out. We're playing with the possibility of keeping our home here and traveling for a while. And we're also, you know, talking about selling this spring. So they're different, different things. But obviously, I don't want to step, step up and in unless someone else is ready to jump in. But at least I wanted to get that on the table, but just knowing that there would need to be a replacement when I do step out.
I'm curious, and if Dave, Dave Bassett could unmute and maybe answer the question. Are there other clubs, small clubs like ours, who are just gonna do a moratorium for a while because of non-attendance and Zoom and all of that? So they're just sort of holding and not worrying about it, not holding meetings? I've heard of some places doing that.
Go ahead, David. Sounds like we're getting, we're getting parts of your conversation.
Share what you need as a bridge. We will have Bannon in our group again and Sarah Kimball.
David, we can't hear you at all.
I'll call you when I.
Okay.
I'll call you when I get out.
All right, thanks, David.
Tim, we could always provide you with a Zoom membership and you could host our Zoom meetings wherever you are.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, that, you're making the assumption that we're gonna be Zooming for the next year, but you know, who knows?
The important thing is that we not lose continuity, if you can hear me now, so.
Yes, it's better, David. Go ahead.
And if you can.
Nope.
District Governor Jerry and me know the situation possible. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Well, I guess I'd like to, since we're already late, if, let's, let's, let me reach out to Mitch and to Jerry one more time. And at the board meeting next Tuesday, we'll make a final decision and then we'll notify district at that point. Okay, thank you. All right. Program today, just so you know, the ones that are kind of in the works. Jim Cohen with the Assessor's Office has said, please wait until after the first of the year. So we've got that one kind of in the, in the hopper. My daughter is also, I've asked her and she is willing to give a presentation about the August Wilson, he, the American playwright, he's got a lot of things in, that are popular right now, a new film that's out and Ma Bottoms, Ma Rainey's Bottom, and a documentary that just came out that she was actually a part of. Anyway, so we've got that. And then I contacted a winery in Eugene that has some interesting Rotary connections. And so, knowing there are some wine connoisseurs in our, in our membership, would, so, trying to make those connections. And then we've got Jeremy giving a state of the library address. So in coming up with the program for today, I have a few minutes of your time. So again, I'll go back to sharing screen, if I can find it. Let me see if I can go there. Can you see the PowerPoint?
You can see your file, your, your, your open file, but not the PowerPoint itself.
Okay, let me try this one more time here. There we go.
Got it.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, this is kind of a, a second version, if you will, of the Student Success Act. And it was about, well, 14 months ago that we, the district was on its journey to complete a plan for year one, which is this current school year. And this was the beginning of a, hopefully, a continuation of additional funding provided by a corporate tax. And as required by that law, we are to do a series of community involvement and community engagement sessions. And Rotary actually was my first one in November of 19. And so I've kind of revised that one to, to give you a report of what we've done with that money and then kind of verify with you or use the brain trust present to either affirm or come up with something in addition for our school board to consider. So basically, again, there, the law passed, it was about approximately $2 billion in additional revenue specific for K-12. There were certain areas that the money could go towards. I'm gonna share with you the results from last year's survey and how it influenced this year's plan. And then talk about the impact of what COVID did and then finally getting into the submission for us to continue. So again, a quick review, the student investment account is a portion of the, is half of the Student Success Act. And primarily, as it says here, I won't read them all, but essentially, it's meeting the mental and behavioral health needs of students and increasing achievement and opportunities for the underrepresented as listed here. There were four categories that the money could be used for, around class size, around well-rounded education, around time, how we use time, and then health and safety. And so, I did a couple of surveys. I had, I think, four or six community engagements. Oops, I'm too early. So basically, that's, that's the same, what we did. So these were the results of that survey that we had 275 people respond, and these were the four priorities that came out of that. To hire a full-time counselor at Riley Creek. In the past, it had been a, when I first came to the district, it was a half, it was a one counselor for the district. So half the day was at the high school and half the day was at the elementary. Through some other grant funding, we were able to add another half to the high school, primarily around careers and, and college counseling. But, and we were fortunate to have a retired counselor come back and work the halftime at Riley Creek. So that became a priority, as well as having a nurse for the district. The other priorities, actually, yeah, it says four priorities, but because, well, anyway. Making our schools and buses safer and healthier, come along with, with security and having heated schools, those types of things, to decrease our elementary class size and to add more electives at the high school. This then became, through that process, these became the, the plan that was submitted to the state. And this was in the amount of about $430,000. And with that, we budgeted these items. Again, I'll just quickly go through them. The Riley Creek counselor, adding another teacher, upgrading the outdoor securities at both schools, the locks, some technology upgrades, including more devices for kids for instruction. All of our new buses came with security cameras, so we were gonna add those to our older fleet. Again, some more activities after school. With Ascend, we kind of covered the middle school and with a little bit into the ninth grade for high school, but primarily Ascend has, has, has done the middle, the five through eight, and so the commitment in the plan was to have a similar program for younger students and also go into having the school available on weekends for internet use and so on. Staff development and then some enrichment activities. So we submitted our plan, it was approved, and then COVID came. And with the impact on the state budget and state revenues related to that tax structure, we were given less than 40% of that $430,000. So the result of this current school year, from that big long list on the previous slide, we weren't able to do two of those things. And one was to hire the full-time counselor and we've, we've been very fortunate with this young man, who's just doing excellent work at the elementary. And we are one bid short to getting the work done at both schools with the updating the electronic security. And we are one bid short to getting the work done at both schools with the updating the electronic security systems. Now, I'm going to go back the slide just real quick here. Because of other grants we've received, either through COVID relief from the federal and the state level, we've been able to check some of these off our box, if you will, which include some tablets. We, we received a local grant. We've, we, two other grants that have helped us purchase more tablets. We use our general fund money to take care of the heating upgrade. We have another grant that covers the attendance advocate, that one goes out into the community and helps with kids who are struggling with attendance. These enrichment ones have fell to the wayside, if you will, waiting for more funding. So we have been able to spend a good amount of money in some of these areas. So the questions I have for you today would be either affirming those ideas or if there were things that have now come up, maybe because of COVID and because of our current structures that may have more, more weight. I think as I look to number three, the third question. Sorry, got a phone call there. Well, I actually am gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna answer, I'll finish that sentence, sorry. Internet access and childcare opportunities are those that continue to come up. So I would anticipate those would be echoed by you all as well. But, so after going through the, I'm sorry, I should, I should also share at this point that we received notification that in the, but the governor's budget that she announced in December that the, this program would go back to full funding. So we're looking at going back to that $450,000 plus grant. And granted, some of those items on that orange list are continuing, but there are some other things that are one-time expenses. So with all that said, the floor is opened for either questions for me or areas from your perspective as a community member of things that we should continue to consider. Again, I'll just remind you of kind of those, those areas. And I know you're not all experts in education. I appreciate that, but you're all educated people. So whether you're looking through the lens of a parent or grandparent or just as a community member, are there, are there topics or, or strategies or things that come to mind?
Well, I'll just say as somebody who is not a parent or a grandparent of a child in our district, I have no idea what is going well or not well in the, in the district. Or what could improve. But to go to the third one, the barriers, you know, if part of this a year ago and when you were putting this together was to address the disparity in children's level of achievement, blah, blah, blah. COVID has made that just so much worse.
Right.
You know, that to me, and that's, that's just nationally or internationally. That they're so far behind that it may not be possible for them, for them to catch up.
Well, so, so one allowable expense as an example with this would be an extended school year. Yeah, so whether it's summer school or, you know, targeted early entry for kindergarten, kind of a kindergarten pre-camp, if you will, boot camp. But I think that you're hitting it right on. Julie and I were talking about this last night. And again, it's, it's worldwide. How are we going to look back at this year and the loss of, of growth, if you will, for, for most kids? Yes, there, we're doing our best with what we have and knowing that locally, having the kids in school is, is such more of an advantage than the majority of our state. But how do we address that, that gap? And so what I hear you saying is, is identifying ways for that, that achievement, whether it's more time or extended summer.
I, I think we're lucky in our town that the kids have been able to go, even though it's a shorter school day. I talked to some friends that have kids in high school that are up all night playing online games and they sleep all day. It's just what it's come to. So at least our kids are, you know, they're going to school, they're getting homework, they're seeing their friends, be it they're masked up. And I don't, I haven't heard of any COVID being transmitted through them being back to school. So I feel really blessed that we've been able to do it.
Yeah. We actually had our first reported student case. It was a Riley Creek student. That was, occurred during the winter break. And so it didn't impact the school, impacted one of our local childcare centers temporarily, but they've reopened now. But yeah, we have been fortunate that we haven't had staff or, or students during, during instruction. Our time will come. So, but you're, you're right. We are, the horror stories around that you hear as well about, as you shared, are pretty, pretty challenging. And, and I did hear some sad news about a Brookings teenager who took their life over the last couple of days. And again, this is second or third hand, but basically they, the quote was, I can't do this anymore. And so whether they were referring to COVID or missing school or whatever their life was, but you know, any lot, any life lost is, is not good. And, but yeah, the mental, actually, I had another staff member yesterday share as, as we are screening in the morning for kids arriving. You know, we're looking for physical symptoms. We're checking to see, are they feeling okay? Is anybody sick at home? And one of the kids, so when the first question, how are you feeling today? And, and the response from the student was mentally or physically. And so again, I think that was a clue of, yeah, I'm here because I have to be at school, but am I fully prepared? Do I, you know, all those other, obviously there was a follow-up question with that, with that student. But, but he was one that verbalized, yeah, we're not all there. And I think most, I think if anything, we've, I have realized how important the, the social part of being at a school is part of the development, you know, of, of us as humans is that social interaction. And when we don't have it, that's when we're seeing all these other, so that's going to take time to, to mend. So, okay, any other, any others thoughts?
There is in the North County a pre-K program that two women set up that my understanding is they're very successful.
Yes.
And would perhaps be something worth looking at and seeing if.
Maybe Tim could answer some questions about that.
I could, yeah. Yeah, Jeremy, actually, a couple, it was right before the holidays. I had a initial meeting with, with Head Start. And, you know, one of my goals for the district has been to increase our offerings to be a pre-K. Not to necessarily be in competition with Head Start, but you know, there's Head Start, there, there was Christian Mayor's preschool tuition-based, and then there was the kids who didn't have anything. And so in trying to fill that gap, we've had, we've had some initial meetings about how the district might be able to add to its offerings, a pre-K program. And, and Jeremy is wearing another one of his hats, sits on the regional early learning hub that coordinates grants and so on. So that's an active activity I have going for the.
You know, one of the, Carl, bigger picture, it's interesting timing. It's, it's kind of unfortunate that so much energy is having to be directed to COVID right now. But, but what, one of the interesting developments is that up in Banden, there is a group that has pulled together resources from a number of different places to build a partnership for, for, for childcare. And, and so we're sort of looking at potentially a model like that down here. But one of the other confluences that's really interesting is that the person that's been directing the, the Head Start in Port Orford that's had so much success kind of building these kindergarten readiness programs. She's also now the Gold Beach Head Starts under her purview. So, so she's really interested in talking with us in Gold Beach about some of that. So there's all kinds of different things kind of percolating and.
I wasn't talking about the Head Start program.
No, 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 I know, but I guess what I'm saying is that Head Start, the, the great thing about it is, is that the, the Head Start folks, they don't care whether it's a Head Start program or not. They see the need and they're very, they're very motivated to, to do anything they can to help other groups. So it's, it wouldn't be just, we're not actually talking about expanding Head Start or Head Start, but it's more like collaborating with Head Start to have more of a comprehensive holistic program for both kindergarten readiness and childcare.
Okay, I just, you know, I don't know if Dave Bassett's still on, but I learned of the Ready, Start, Learn program by attending a Rotary meeting in Port Orford.
Right.
And then we put their video on one of our first Curry County Voices programs on, back in the day when we put things on channel 182. And the county still plays that on 182 from time to time when they have nothing left over from the 1950s to play. So, you know, I just, it seemed like it's not Head Start or it's really just a short term before the school year starts to get kids comfortable with getting on a bus and coming into a classroom and having a snack and.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's two, and this is, I mean, I'm probably going to be repeating some of the stuff I had to step out that Tim was saying earlier. But from my perspective, and this is from being involved a little bit more with the school, but also just having a spouse who's a teacher and also at the library, what I see is that kindergarten readiness is really truly a big deal. But there's a second leg to it, which is just pure and simple. There is no childcare options available in, in, in the Gold Beach area. And the, and I guess for me right now, yeah, I think if kindergarten readiness could be rolled into the childcare and it could be kind of all addressed in one, with one approach, that would be great.
Yep, agreed.
Good, thank you.
I guess, Tim, before you wrap this up, I would say that, you know, that what I've seen over COVID, I don't know, everything's so complex and there's so many needs and it's hard to know what the strategy and the approach is. But I do think that what's on paper that the school district put together is still relevant and sound. And, and that the, both the psychological needs and the childcare, those two things to me just really jump out as just deep, deep needs.
Sorry, I have to mute myself.
Okay, so, great, thank you, thank you.
Well, Tim, the one thing I really hope is that, I mean, healthcare workers obviously desperately need the vaccine. But I think teachers and staff are right up there with them. I think they absolutely need to be vaccinated so that we can get our kids back in school and we don't lose teachers.
Yeah.
Tim, my, my doctor in Grants Pass sent an email kind of giving some updates on when she thought vaccines would be available to different tiers of people that are her customers. And it looked to me like what she was saying, and she's in Josephine County, so I don't know. But she was sort of saying that for the average Joe, actually, I'm not even sure if it was the average Joe, but for like the B category, it might not be until March. Is, do you have a, do you have any sense of that here in Curry?
No, no. But again, at my meeting yesterday, the, for the governor's goal to have, you know, kids in the building as soon as possible, there certainly has to be some coordination with that whole vaccination program. To say I want kids in school by February 15th, right now seems like an unrealistic target, if you also want all the teachers vaccinated by then. So that, so hopefully we're going to meet in the middle sometime. I had, I had always hoped that would be before spring break personally. But I have no, I have no conversation, I haven't had any contact with our local folks to see where we are in line.
And Facebook is hard to get any news since the one blog shutdown. Are you hybrid or are you?
We are. Yeah, we, yeah, we're able to continue on our same model. So something you might be aware, over the holiday on December 23rd, the governor declared that the metrics are, rather than be mandatory, are advisory. But we're really not sure what that means. And so those discussions are continuing and we've been informed that on January 19th, we'll get some new guidance. The, the tenor of the room yesterday of the Zoom of 200 plus were, even though that the term is advisory now than mandatory, most districts are not going to jump right in and say, okay, now we can open our doors. They're, they're going to still rely a lot on OHA and their, and the data. So with that said, Curry County in the last two week look back went from the red to orange. So we are, we're, we're looking in the right direction. Of course, we know where there's, the next couple of weeks will be crucial. But we're confident on what we're doing. I understand that Brookings this week was bringing their K-5 back. And then I think it's tomorrow, they were bringing back part of the middle school and then the ninth graders for half days, similar to ours. And Port Orford is also continuing in their same model. So, yeah, we need more information before we can, can move forward. So, well, thank you for your, you were my test audience today. Tomorrow night I'll be doing a similar forum for the community, for those who wish to attend. And, but if anything else comes up, we'll certainly keep you posted. There'll be another presentation in April. And that's when I'll ask the board to adopt that as part of our budget. So is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay, well, it's great to see everyone and we'll again have a board meeting next week and we'll knock out some of these other items. So best wishes to you all and stay dry, safe, safe. Give an arm to somebody if they'll give you a shot, take it. And we'll continue to see Morgan's development to see if there's any extra ears or anything.
Exactly.
Or in her case, it'd probably be an extra eyeball or something. So, yeah. All right, take care, everybody. Go ahead and stop the recording.